I will call the Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, March 5th, 2018, 6:30 PM. Before I get into the agenda, I want to welcome everyone this evening. This is an honor to be mayor during our 100th birthday. 100 years ago today, Newport became Vermont's 7th city. And it's an honor to be here for the 100th. Our first mayor was Curtis Emery. And I've been in contact with his grandchildren, who extended their congratulations to the city. They wish they could have been here this evening, but they are both traveling. And they will make it this summer for the summer celebration. But they're planning on being here, as the first mayor's grandchildren. Our first city coun... Oh, I'm trying to speak up. I knew we needed a microphone. I'm trying to speak, okay. Our first city council consisted of W.M. Proudie, who was the father of Senator Winston Proudie. Another council member was Ernest W. Savage, who was the father of Judge Savage. We have James Gardner, who was one of the original council members. That's what Gardner Park is named after. And then we had Harry Black, who was the final alderman. And he was served as Mont's secretary of state at the same time. And so with that, I will introduce some members at the table. To my far right is James Johnson, our clerk treasurer. To his left is John Wilson, president of the city council. To my immediate right, John's left, is Julie Rabouin, a member of the city council. We have Dennis Chenette, a member of the city council. James Miriam, a member of the city council. And Laura Dogan, our city manager. And now I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 19th, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the minutes of 19th February, 2018.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Made by Mr. Wilson, segmented by Mr. Chenette. Any discussion on the minutes? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item would be the approval of the February 22nd, 2018 minutes. And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion, we approve the council minutes of 22th February, 2018.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I will second.
Made by Mr. Wilson, segmented by Mr. Miriam. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Chenette abstains since he did not attend the meeting. The motion carries. Next item will be comments by members of the public. This is for any item that's not on the agenda. We are having the informational meeting about the annual report, I mean about the warning. And so... Then I'll move on. Number four, it's the informational meeting about the annual meeting warning. This was published in the report and also published in the newspaper. This is a chance for people to ask questions about the warning that will be voted on tomorrow. Yes?
On page 18 of the report, there's legal costs of $39,835. Could someone tell us what that expense was for?
If I could get to my computer. You're with me. Jess, can I talk to you for a second?
Paul, well, Laura's looking at it, did I comment on the 7th?
7th?
On the warning?
Yes.
So, I got petitioned with a required number of signatures, 175, I think, as Jen told me. Anyway, I don't know, any more than that. And the reason I got the petition was because I believe Scott Farm property is under appraised compared with the other lakefront property just to the north of the Scott Farm property. Dr. Mosher, his property is 2.6 acres, about $586,000. Attorney Carrier's property is about 9.6 acres, $680,000. And the Scott Farm is about $1.4 million, and it has buildings on it. The other two properties are there. And so, I just want to let people know, that's why it doesn't really say in the article. It said where people sign, why I thought this should be assessed. Now, it's true that the assessor doesn't have to reassess the property. It's just hoping that the voters will vote, yes, the property needs to be assessed because it's under assessed. So that's why I petitioned that article, so.
Are you going to have it on screen, Laura, or are you going to...
I'm going to have it. You're with me.
I'm guessing most of the expenses for the... I would guess it would be for the litigation in the water department with the building service center.
A lot of it is.
So, a lot of it is, that answer? So if that's the case, I don't understand why to put it in the general fund. The expenses related to the water fund, they're... All those expenses are paid by the state of Vermont, the federal government, and all the nonprofits, including all the people that are in Newport. And all those expenses are prorated based on usage. So, when you spend money for the water fund, that's where the expenses show up. It should not show up in the general fund, because the general fund is paid by just the people that pay property taxes. So I think that's a mistake, and I would ask the council to see that that's corrected. Because that amount of money, roughly $40,000, I'd generally make, and that would decrease the amount the general fund owes the water fund, which is on page 88, if you're interested. And the general fund owes the water fund about $2,000. So it would cause a deficit to the water fund, but even if it did, the expenses should go where they're incurred. And it makes no sense to have water fund expenses put in the general fund. So that's why I asked that question. So I hope the council follows up on that, make sure we're doing what's done. And of course, that will help us with our future tax rate, because you'll have $39,000 more, and we won't have to raise by property taxes. The next question I have, I want to see how it responds.
Laura?
I've got the expenses of how and where we expend our attorney's fees. You can see that the Village of Dirty Water has been expensed to the water fund. Our delinquent tax collection amounts have been reimbursed by those who are on the delinquent tax collection list. There's a little bit more to go here.
So is the number in the report wrong?
I don't think so.
The $39,000? Is the water fund expense?
No, that's the total for attorney's fees. $6,385.12 have been expensed to the water fund.
So it's not part of $39,000?
No, it is not.
So we spent $39,000 in general fund expenditures?
No, we spent $31,000. This is the spreadsheet, John, where we tabulate all of our expenses and break it down into subject note.
I'm just trying to understand the report. So if the number in the report's incorrect, what are you telling me?
The number in the report should show $31,658.60 for general expenses under professional fees. And it should show $6,385.12 expended to the water fund.
I didn't find that in the report.
So Laura, I think the number here is 39, so you're going to reduce it by at least $6,000, whatever, for the water fund?
Yeah, $6,385.12.
Well, anyway, so $6,000 should go to the water fund and not the... I thought it would be more than that. Anyways, we still have a lot of money in the interest. So, page 78, bike path. So, moving in the bike path, that $46,357 was committed. When we finished the bike path, it was federal and state funds that were paid for the easement, the yearly easement, you have to pay the railroad. All the other easements, the city purchased. But the railroad, as you know, wouldn't sell the city easements, may release. So my question is, the audits report says that was expended, and so I've got two questions. When did the city council approve the expenditure of the committed funds? Because it has to be done by a formal resolution. And what did you spend it on?
Mr. Johnson?
Use it to reduce the tax rate?
Use it to reduce the tax rate? Does the city council have a formal resolution to do that? The audits report says that a formal resolution is required to commit funds that have been previously committed. I'm surprised the audits didn't pick it up. Remember, they pick up something like that. So, does anyone in the council remember having a formal resolution to use the bike path money to reduce taxes?
It was the previous council.
It was the previous council, and they voted when they decided the budget to reduce it.
No, that wouldn't work. It has to be a formal resolution. According to the audit, that's the formal resolution. It can't just be approving the budget. Because the funds were previously committed. So I'd ask you to check into that. That should be checked into. Because maybe you need to do a formal resolution soon. On page 75, there's an expense for library depreciation. $53,000. What is that?
I don't know why that's in there, John. I don't know why the library would be in there.
Something the audit did, but not that thing. Libraries are different organizations.
Absolutely, that's why I asked the question.
I don't know why it's in there.
So I'd ask the council to follow up on that. On page 17, there was a large increase in the... From 16, 17 to the budget of 17, 18. Certain of the salaries moved from $73,000 to $81,000. What was the reason for that? I'm assuming you hired more staff.
Can you repeat that?
On page 17, city clerk salaries. In FY 16, 17, the actual, $73,000. And you budgeted $81,000 for this year. I'm just asking, why the big increase, more than 10%? I'm assuming it's because you added more staff. Is that correct?
Yeah, part of it. You hired Becky. A part of her time was in the clerk treasury of the Russian District City Management.
So just the increase hours. Thank you. On page 35. So I noticed that you didn't include the principal payments in the actuals. And, but you didn't include depreciation. The advantage of not including the depreciation, but including the principal payments, is people can see, when they look at the report, what the principal payments are for all the money we borrowed. And in the general fund, you did do it that way. You did show the principal payments and the interest payments. And so I would just say that I think it should be consistent. And I would say that it's more valuable to... It's more valuable to a taxpayer, a resident, just to be able to see what you budgeted and what you expended. Depreciation, as you know, is a non-cash expense. It's an expense, it's non-cash. So, that's just a comment that would make it a little easier for people to see what was budgeted and what was spent. And I know when you capitalize it, it's not the true expense. I understand that. But, you know, when we're looking at the report, we'd like to see what was budgeted and what was spent. Okay. The last question I have, thank you for very moving. When I was city management, a hard time getting the Village of Dirty Center to calibrate their wastewater meter. And of course, as you all know, the wastewater meter measures how much wastewater flow they have, and that's how we end up building the Village of Dirty Center. It's my understanding, it still hasn't been calibrated. And what happens is these meters, over time, they go slower and slower. So what's happening is, we're subsidizing the wastewater flow from the Village of Dirty Center. So I would ask the council to put it on your list of things to do, to make sure that that wastewater meter gets calibrated. Because they go slow over time. And that, and we will pick it... Our residents pick up that extra cost. So that was all. Thank you very much.
Anything else? On any of the articles to be voted on tomorrow? If there are no other questions on the informational about the...
I was just wondering, when we had that deep freeze, and there was ice on the sidewalks, and half the sidewalk was not sanded, it would be... That's actually a safety issue. I want to know what could be addressed about that in the future.
Our Public Works Director is here. I know they got out as quickly as they could to make sure the sidewalks were sanded to the best of their ability. I know this has been a very difficult winter, with it raining in 50 degrees one day to 20 below zero the next day. It's been a very, very difficult year with the ice. And I know they have been out as quick as they can when it comes to sanding the sidewalks. And actually, the streets and the sidewalks. But it has been an extremely difficult year because of the weather changes. And I know it's not just here in Newport, but in other communities, they've had the same issue with what you call flash freezes, where everything just freezes so quickly. And so, I do know that they keep an eye on the weather, they try to get out as quickly as they can.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. In 2004, after we did the appraisal, everybody got a little booklet, telling them what everything in town was. You're not going to give one of those this year?
Well, we did in 2004. I have no idea what Spencer's got. That's his book.
Could be checked out, maybe. It's always nice to know as you look around. But everybody got now that.
That might have been one of those things that... Remember, certain things were cut out of the votes, not my estimate, but by the contract. Because originally, originally it was in the reappraisal contract to put door knockers if they weren't home. And I know that was cut. That was in the past.
Oh, no, I was just saying, in 2004, we all got a booklet.
Right.
After the fact, and this is property value, it was by street and then actually by name.
You can find that material on our Vision website. You can search by street, you can search by address, you can search by landowner.
I know that, but some of us like a book. Or we don't have to sit there and scan through the computer for it. Okay.
Website is very easy to use.
Anything else? Yes?
I haven't looked at the ballot yet this year, but two years ago, I think the amount that the citizens had to pay was $3.1 million. And last year, it went up to about $3.8 million. And I think this year, it's up to about $3.9 million that we're going to have to pay. Is that reflected in the ballot finally this year? That, you know, two years ago, it was $3.1 million. Last year, it was $3.8 million. And this year, it's going to be $3.9 million. Because otherwise, if you just tell people, will you accept a budget for $3.9 million? They don't know what they're comparing it to. So are you reflecting that in the ballot this year, as I suggested you should do last year?
No.
Mr. Johnson, would you answer that?
No, it's not in the ballot. The number is reflected in the annual report. And it reflected in every budget meeting we had leading up to this. Ballot, it is back the way it's been forever.
Anything else on the actual warning for the meeting that will be voted... For the items that will be voted on tomorrow? Okay. The next item, Mr. Johnson, new business? Mr. Wilson?
No.
I'll talk off.
Ms. Rabouin?
I have no new business. Mr. Chenette?
Well, I would like to thank the U.S. Postal Service for sending Scott over to Pantala Cachets this evening. Very nice of them. And we also will have new cleans for sale as well. And we'll have those on display later.
Any other old business? Mr. Miriam? Mr. Dobin? I mean, new business, as I meant, new business.
No, thank you. But I think, was there a question over here about the stamps? Did I hear? Somebody was at... There are 50 cents for a canceled stamp, if you want to go over. They're really nice. Okay, thank you.
So no other new business, any new, okay?
No, thank you.
Old business, Mr. Johnson? Mr. Wilson?
No.
Ms. Rabouin? The only old business I have is a week ago. Karen Garrity from NBDA, Laura Dogan, our city manager, myself. Were before the downtown board in Montpelier, where they reviewed the application for a designated downtown renewal, and they approved it. So, we do have to go back in July for a follow-up on a couple of things. Other than that, they have re-approved our designated downtown, which is a real positive for the city, because it allows business owners to qualify for tax credits. And I know, for example, the Montgomery Board Building, or Rick Woodwood Building, is currently using those tax credits to make improvements to his building, handicap accessible, and things like that. So, I just wanted to report that that went well. And we received the vote of approval to renew our designated downtown for five years. That's what I had, that's all I had on the old business. Mr. Chenette?
No.
Mr. Miriam?
I would just like to note that it seems March has been a time for a sort of cabin fever in municipal government for a long time. So not only did 100 years ago today, we got together and built and made a city, but 227 years ago was the anniversary of Vermont's statehood, so we might as well mark that as well.
Great. Anything else? Ms. Dobin?
No, thank you.
All right. And I'm going to set, the next meeting will be an annual meeting to bring up any other business from the regular... From the annual meeting. It's tomorrow night at 8:00 PM, following the vote. The next centennial planning meeting will be March 14th, 2018, 5 to 7:00 PM. The next regular city council meeting is Monday, March 19th, 2018. And now I would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular portion of the meeting. And we will go into a centennial presentation by the Centennial Committee. So, this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the regular city council meeting at 7:03. A motion made by Ms. Rabouin. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion on that? And all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. We are adjourned. And now I welcome the Centennial Committee to come up and the council. We will go into the audience and enjoy the presentation at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Newport City Council. It is my honor to wish the city of Newport a happy birthday. Today marks 100 years. I'm sorry? It is my honor to wish the city of Newport a hearty birthday. Today marks 100 years since the city's organization. We are here to celebrate our past, present, and future. Due to the incredible generosity of our beloved Tony Parmelo, the city will be celebrating our 100 years by putting on an incredible weekend of festivities scheduled for Friday, June 20th, through Wednesday, July 4th, 2018. This would not be possible without Mr. Parmelo's generous good wishes, but he steadily increased since May 5th, 2016. The organization has been having meetings so far to put on this magical, once-in-a-lifetime event for the city of Newport, and in Tony's honor. Last summer, we were delighted to appoint Tony as the Centennial Grand Marshal. Unfortunately, he did not... He will not be able to attend this year because he passed away in his 100th year. We will still honor his legacy in the best way possible and in conformance with the family's wishes. I'd like to introduce you to some of the volunteers who have worked tirelessly over the past 23 months to bring you this event. This is the list of some of our volunteers, and it's steadily growing. And we invite any of you who care to join us. We'd love to have you come and be part of our organization as well. This is the two dates list, and we know that it's going to grow tremendously in the next coming year. A heartfelt thanks goes out to everyone who has worked so hard to bring this event onto our scene and for the summer presentation as well. And we would like especially to thank the Parks and Rec Department and the Newport City Public Works Department, because they've worked really hard to bring this together tonight, bringing in, washing all the windows and getting everything all set and ready for us tonight. So we thank them especially. Other contributors have come forward in the way of sponsorship, and the list of sponsors is growing. We are delighted to have the assistance of our local institutions and businesses who are supporting this event in every way, from underwriting events, assisting with refurbishing. A precious Mac, the one you see over here, that's one just like that. It's going to be refurbished, it'll be brand new, and we'll have that for you by July. Unfortunately, we couldn't get it done for today, but we will have it by July. Unfortunately, we couldn't get it done for today, but we will have it by July. People have been providing goods and services and volunteers and contributing in their own unique way to many ways to help us through this process. Okay, and there's the list of sponsors and volunteers that we have so far. And you need to know that this is a work in progress. This is going to grow. This is just the beginning. All of these volunteers and sponsors have produced the following events that we hope our local community and visitors will follow and enjoy. And that all of you will come out and enjoy as well when we get to June and July. And this is the list of events so far. And you'll get much more detail on these later on. This is just a, an outline of what is coming. We have all kinds of events for children and adults, for everybody's taste. There'll be something for everybody during this super, super celebration. And now I'd like to turn this event over to James Johnson. He's going to provide us some information about the city's history.
Thanks, Carol. I'm going to give a brief rundown of the history of the city, starting all the way back when Newport was first founded. As James mentioned, it's 227th anniversary of the statehood. And it's also the 225th anniversary of the town of Newport. So we're celebrating two things this year. I apologize, I'm going to read this. There's a lot of stuff here. If you ask me a question, I could probably answer it about it, but I don't have it in memory. So bear with me. Some people here know, know a lot about this stuff, but a lot of people don't. So I'm going to start right at the beginning. As we all know, the Abenaki Indians were the first known inhabitants of the area, and they lived along the lake. They called it Magog, which is, means beautiful water, and had beautiful waters in Abenaki. There are three rivers that connect to the lake, the Clyde, the Barton, and the Black Rivers. And the Abenaki used the lake and these rivers as their main source of transportation. So over the years, there have been four flags flown over this area. First was the flag of France that flew over the area from 1609 to 1760. The flag of England flew over the area from 1760 to 1776. And the Republic of Vermont flag flew over the area from 1777 to 1791. And then, of course, the flag of the United States. So moving along, the first non-native American to pass through the area was John Stark. He passed through in 1757, 58 is, he was a prisoner of the Abenaki's. He was rescued by Rogers Rangers during the raid of the Village of St. Francis in Quebec. And they came, on the way back, they came down the west side of Lake Magog. Legend has it, there's a huge treasure buried somewhere in Newport Derby area. Nobody's ever been able to find it, but, so it's still there if you want to go treasure it. Later, John Stark became General John Stark, commanded the American forces with Battle of Bennington in August, 1777. Newport was granted township by Vermont on October 26, 1781. The town covered a total of 23,040 acres. However, its charter was not issued until September 21, 1803, when it was given to Nathan Fisk and George Duncan under the name Duncan's Borough. So Newport was Duncan's Borough in the beginning. In 1793, brothers John and Martin Adams were the first settlers in the town of Duncan's Borough. This is a little interesting. In 1800, the census listed Duncan's Borough as having 11 families totaling 50 people and six yoke of oxen. That was, that was the census in 1800. In 1816, small parts of the town of Coventry and Salem were annexed to Duncan's Borough, and the Vermont legislature officially changed the name to Newport. Interestingly, the portion of the town annexed from the town of Salem includes what we call downtown Newport today. In 1820, John Sayers purchased a peninsula known as Pickle Point, which was the downtown area. He logged it and it was settled. In 1832, a road was laid out and a bridge was constructed across the Narrows between the Village of Derby and the Village of Newport, which is the Cosway Bridge we know today. Well, not the Cosway Bridge we know today, a wooden one. Logging was the only large industry. Logs moved down the lake to the mills such as Proudy and Miller in 1863, which is furniture, Newport Furniture, which are made in Newport today. The Frost veneer built in 1880, located where the Teddy Bear Factory is across the bay. And the International built mill built in 1883, located where Waterfront Plaza is today. I missed one, one thought. The Long Bridge, I mentioned the Cosway Bridge. The Long Bridge, or Veterans Memorial Bridge, was built in 1862. And the new Cosway Bridge, as we know today, was replaced in 1927 after the flood destroyed the original one. In 1902, a new high school and grade school was built. It was a three-story brick building costing $28,000. It would later become the West School, which was located in the parking lot across from United Christian Academy today. In 1905, four sisters from France came to Newport to operate a hospital and teach school. In 1909, the sisters purchased the Green Mountain Hall, and they established a convent and a school in the hall. I'm not exactly sure where the Green Mountain Hall was, but I suspect it was up somewhere near the old St. Joseph's home. In 1940, a high school was opened in the same convent building. And in 1953, Sacred High School was built. So now we get the good part. In 1917, the Village of Newport was the hub of everything. There are thriving lumber businesses and luxury hotels. Luxury hotels. On March 5th, 1918, the Village of Newport and the Village of West Derby combined to become the city of Newport. And the lines for the city of Newport were drawn. The Mount Vernon, Glen Road, and Clyde Street areas were also incorporated into the city. The West Derby School became the East School. The Glen Derby School became the South School. Newport High School, the grade school, became the West School. And in 1925, Newport High School was built at a cost of $98,000. That is the Christian Academy building today. It closed in 1967 and became Lakeview Elementary School. It is now the United Christian Academy. As Paul mentioned, the city's first mayor was C.S. Emory, and he listed the aldermen. Willard R. Proudy, James T. Gardner, Harriet A. Black, and Ernest Savage. From 1918 to 1921, the first city offices were housed in the Brady, Brady House, located on the corner of Main and Field Avenue. And that's where the municipal parking lot is today. In 1921, the offices were moved to the new Newport Armory, which was built the same year. And the Armory, the Armory was purchased from the state, from the National Guard by the city in 1962. In September, 1919, Articles Association for the Newport Hospital Association was registered with the state. The cornerstone was laid in July, 1922, and construction was completed in January, 1923. Those of us who remember, Orleans County Memorial Hospital opened in early 1924. At that time, there were 24 beds, five full-time employees, and five nurses in training. North Country Hospital opened in 1974. It had 80 beds and a medical center. On November 2nd and 3rd, 1927, two large storms converged over Vermont. Waterways were uncontrolled, all highways, railways, telephone, and other communications were out. The city was cut off from the world, the outside world. The first connection was by North Canadian Railway 10 days later, on November 13th. Newport had two large dance halls. The Wigwong Dancing Pavilion was built in 1927, was located on the Bluff Road, and it burned in 1935. The International Club was built in 1936, and that was located on Blanchard Avenue. If anybody's wondering where it was located. It was the largest dance floor in New England. It held 2,000 dancers. Performers such as Louis Armstrong, Les Brown, Mary, Rosemary Clooney, Cab Calloway, Glenn Miller, and the Dorsey Brothers all entertained there on route between Montreal and Boston. And that floor, dance floor, all closed in 1953. A lot of houses in Newport have the, the hardwood floors came out of the International Dance Building. And the house I live in, now my parents' house, is one of them. At the turn of the century, Newport had four hotels on Railroad Square. Everybody knows the Metamagog House. It had 888 rooms, was built in 1839. It had additions in 1854 and burned in 1906. The Hearst Hotel was across from the Metamagog House. It would have been beside Newport House, if you can picture that. The Raymond House was located on a piece of land between the present Cosway Bridge and the Long Bridge, where Little G's Mini Mart is. The Bellevue Hotel was built in 1873 and was renamed the Newport House in 1891. It was demolished in 1973 and is now on the side of People's United Bank. From 1850 to 1948, there were many steamers on the lake with names like the Magog, the Stars and Strikes, the Yoko, the John A. and Oscar C. Those were tugboats built by Proudy and Miller to transport logs to the mills. The original mountain maid was built, sailed, was sailed from 1850 to 1870. She was 105 feet long and carried 250 passengers in freight. After she was put out of service, how many people know this? After she put out of service, her haul and boilers were salvaged and a new mountain maid was built. The second mountain maid was significantly different and operated from 1878 to 1892. The Lady of the Lake, which we all know, is a city seal. The Lady of the Lake is the most famous. She was 167 feet long. She was licensed to carry over 500 passengers. She sailed from 1867 to 1915. She would become the seal of the city of Newport. The Anthemas was the last one, was built in 1907. She was 100 feet long, carried 300 passengers. For 30 years, the Anthemas was owned by Captain Alexander Clark of Newport. And some of us will remember his daughter Elizabeth Betty Clark. She was a well-known resident of the city. The Anthemas operated until 1948. She was the last of the steamers. There had been other passenger boats on the lake based in Newport, including the Newport Princess, Newport Bell, and the Northern Star. Now to the entertainment. Motion pictures came to Newport in the early 1900s. The Lane Opera House showed silent movies for 20 cents. Edison's Genuine Talking Moving Pictures came in 1913. In 1914, the Premier opened, the Premier Theater opened on Comedy Street. And in June, 1925, it was razed and moved to Main Street, and it would become the Burns Theater. That happened on September 16th, 1925. When Burns Theater opened, they were showing The Thundering Herd. Admission was 25 cents and children was 10 cents. The Metamagog Yacht Club, who sat about 100 yards to our, my right, was built in 1908. It was reached by a steel bridge over the railroad tracks from the end of Field Avenue. It provided swimming, dancing, parties, boating, sailing. It burned in 1946. Today, we have Proudy Beach, was given to the city by the Proudy family member, Governor George H. Proudy. Proudy Beach opened in 1968. The campground opened in 1978. Gardener Park, named after James T. Gardner, one of the aldermen, Paul mentioned. He was a former mayor. That was all swamp over there. It was cleared and filled in the late 30s and 40s during the federal works program. It has playgrounds, picnic areas, soccer fields, ball fields, skating rinks, a grandstand that I hope someday gets taken care of because I hate to lose that. And a war memorial inscribed the names of World War I and II veterans who sacrificed their lives. In 1920, look at that, we've only covered two years, let me see that again. In 1920, a best line was started. The most prominent operator was Greenland Bus Service. Vermont Transit started from Burlington in 1939 and from White, from White River in 1957. The Newport Municipal Airport was dedicated on August 22nd, 1945, on 1,200 acres purchased by the city from the town of Coventry. It was sold to the state in 1962 and reopened in 1963 as the Newport State Airport. In 1952, radio came to Newport. W I K E came on the air. And from 1952 to 1980, probably the most recognizable voice belonged to Bill Graham, who happened to be here tonight. You can pick his voice out on the radio from anywhere. For those of you who remember, grew up in Newport, he also did white night at Newport High School for years. I guess there's nobody here who graduated from Newport High School? Anybody here graduate from Newport High School?
Yes.
All right, people don't remember, all right. Okay, in 1962, Hillside Elementary was opened on Sayers Avenue. It took the place to East and South Schools. Here's an interesting one. In 1963, the city approved the construction of a new sewer treatment facility. The cost would be $1,774,955. Probably four times that today for doing that. The Newport Ambulance Squad was formed in 1966. In 1967, Newport High School closed, and North Country Union High School opened on land donated by the Veterans Park Association. Newport had, had a thriving Main Street in the 1970s. A lot of national change were here, including Montgomery Ward, Caesar's Roebuck, J.J. Newberry, W.T. Grant, W.L.F. Woolworth, M.H. Fishman, Wesonano, J.C. Penney, Grand Union, and Atlantic Pacific Tea Company, or AMP, and many small businesses. With the decline of the railroad, the coming of malls, the box stores, and many other, many businesses left or closed. But the waterfront mall opened in 1972. The Newport City Dock, where we are, was dedicated in 1976. And in 1994, Hillside and Lakeview Elementary Schools were consolidated, and the new school district was renamed Newport City Elementary Schools. In 1995, Christian Academy was purchased, purchased the old Newport High School building, and they're still there. In 1998, the new state office building was built. The fire station was also built in 1998. In 2002, 2003, planning began on our bike path, and it actually opened in 2010. And the city, new city garage was built in 2005. I've just got a few firsts that happened in the city of Newport that I think are really interesting. The first house was built by Isaac Brunel. It was in a field at the junction of what is now Pleasant Street and Island Avenue. Mr. Brunel lived to be 94 years old. He died on Christmas Day, 1885. He had three wives, 22 children, 40 grandchildren, and 30 great-grandchildren. As I stated earlier, Duncan's Borough was settled in 1793. The first sawmill in the area was in 1794, was in West Derby on the upper Clyde, I believe. The first child born in Duncan's Borough was Alan Adams in December 29th, 1794. On March 11th, 1800, $5 was appropriated for support of schools in Duncan's Borough. Won't see that again. The first school building in Duncan's Borough was built in 1807, and it cost $40. In 1813, the first ferry crossed the lake from Penders Point to Whipple Point. That was from the Bluffs to Strawberry Acres. The first documented sighting of a lake monster was in 1816. And some of you recognize this name. In 1820, George and Sally Sayers Smith were the first residents of Newport Village. The village's post office opened in 1834. Here's another name you recognize. And the post master was Seymour Lane. The first hotel, obviously, was the Metamagog House, 1839. First large boat was the Mountain Maid, 1850. The first newspaper was the Newport News. It started in 1861. The first newspaper was the Newport News. It started in 1861. The Newport Republican started in 1869 and later became the Express and Standard. In 1920, the Express and Standard was sold to Wallace Gilpin and Franz Hunt. Later, they leased the North Troy Palladium. After they leased the Palladium, the Palladium and the Newport News combined to form the Palladium and News. And in 1936, the Palladium and News and the Express and Standard combined to form the Newport Daily Express. Friday Mill and Lumber began operation in 1863. Ference Greenhouse is the oldest continuous business in Newport City and is still in business. They opened in 1869 under the name Vine Haven Fruit and Flower Farm. The National Bank of Newport opened in 1875. The Frost-Vanier Mill began operation in 1880. Montpelot's Telephone Company began operation in 1887 and became part of New England Telephone on June first, 1917. The first electric company was Newport Electric Light, started in 1891. The first paved street in the city was Main Street, and it was done in concrete. The first fur-bearing trout, anybody ever caught one of those things? The first fur-bearing trout was caught by Ralph Sessions in 1927. And here's a new thing. I got this out of one of the other publications on the seventy-fifth anniversary. King George VI and Queen Elizabeth visited Newport in 1939 on their way between Boston and Montreal. In conclusion, Newport can claim many important people as their own, including real estate developer and philanthropist Antonio Pallo, who we signed grand marshal, but he died early. Vermont Governors Joshua Grout and George Proudly. Lieutenant Governor David Camp, U.S. Senator Winston Proudly. Vermont Secretaries of State Harry Black and Aaron Grout. Interstate Commerce Commissioner Charles Proudly. Vermont Supreme Court Justice Rudolph Daley. Astronaut Dwayne Grablin. New Hampshire Governor Elaine Duenell. And Charles Adams, a descendant of Martin Adams, who founded the Boston ruins of the NHL and the Adams Division is named for him. There will be no quiz. And that is the history of Newport up until nineteen ninety.
Thank you, Jim. I think we all learned something tonight. And we'd like to move right along now. Victoria Matheson is the artist who was commissioned to paint a city portrait, which is an unprecedented opportunity that would not ever have been realized had it not been for the Parmelos, whose kind donation spearheaded all these efforts. Victoria will speak to the process that she engaged in to create this portrait. Oh, there she is, okay. So I'll turn it over to Victoria Matheson.
Thank you. Hello. Actually, if I had stood here beside Jim, I could have shown you this and he would have explained everything. Actually, I'm going to take this down. And the people at the back probably won't be able to see it very well. But this has taken me since last summer to do. And thanks first to the library, the archive, to the Centennial Committee, Jim especially, for the history. Except that it was a little bit frustrating because I would do a layout and show it to him and he'd say, "Oh, no, that's not there, and that's not there, and actually, that was over there." So we had to start layout after layout after layout. However, I think finally, I've created another town. This one in Vermont, the first one I've done. I live in Vermont. Obviously, I'm not from here. But I am from a similar place because I'm Scottish. And the only difference is that our tallest mountain is twenty feet taller than yours. And I looked that up today. But this has been a super, super thing to do because Newport seems to have gone through a very difficult time in the last few years. And at one point, I said to the Centennial Committee, "Well, what do I do about the hole?" And nobody really said anything. And I decided that we really had to show the hole. And there it is, in the middle, as you can see, right in the middle of Main Street as it is. But I filled it up with a lot of facts about Newport, so hopefully, it's optimistic. As the little tree that is growing out of the top of the chimney, I don't know whether you're going to see that. I'm sure that it's not a geographically accurate map. It is my picture of how I see Newport. And I love the architecture. I'm an architectural artist as well as a landscape painter. And I included the three large ships. Glad to know this one was made in Scotland. And also have included a little bit of history. And had I been standing beside Jim, I could have said, "Yes, that's here, that's here, that's here." And everything that's in sepia and white is a building that has gone from the past. But everything else that's in color is the present. If you live in any of these streets, you'll be able to find your own house. Now, it won't necessarily be in the right place, but that just adds to the charm, I hope. Now, this is the original. It's much larger than the printed version that we've had done, which was printed in Vermont. And the printed version will be for sale, and they are posters. But everybody is going to be able to have one if they want. And I hope that you're pleased with it, and I hope you like it and enjoy looking at it because they require quite a lot of looking at. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to do this.
Thank you, Victoria, for that fabulous rendition of Newport City. It's something that I was surprised at, and I'm sure everybody who looks at it will be as well. There's so much detail and so much work into this. She's put a tremendous amount of effort into this, and I hope every one of you take one home tonight. There'll be lots more memorabilia upstairs too in a little while that you can verify some of the facts that Jim has given you and try and find some of these places in the other memorabilia that is upstairs for you. And we'll get to that in just a minute. Okay, the next speaker we have is Karen Garrity. Karen has been working tirelessly as the Economic Development Specialist with NVDA and on behalf of the city. She has taken an active role as the interim chair of Downtown Development Organization and worked with the city on development opportunities that surround the city. She has been the city's advocate with our grant applications and working with the state and other various consultants and partners. Karen, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. I'll stand here so that you can look at the images in the direction of my voice. I think that will help a bit. As the mayor mentioned, a week ago, the mayor, the city manager and I drove down to Montpelier to present to the state Downtown Board the case for Newport receiving the downtown designation. And as some of you may know, but some of you may not, this is a state program that defines a certain area of our city to bring benefits for business development and for fostering really a dynamic area of the city to bring economic development into. So this is a very important designation for us to have. The downtown status was originally given to Newport in 2007. Has to be restated every five years. And so at the presentation, so received another designation in 2012. And then 2017 was the new application for the downtown designation. And so what we were charged with doing was presenting the accomplishments, the challenges, and essentially the history of the community for the last five years, what has been done. And what this presentation will do, and I'll move through it fairly quickly. This was a presentation that we gave to the state. And it essentially shows some of the economic trends that are in the area and the opportunities that we have for our community to reach into our future. So I didn't bring a crystal ball tonight to look at Newport's future because the future belongs to all of us. And as we can see from Jim's wonderful history presentation and from Victoria's stunning portrait of our city, we have a strong foundation on which to build our future. So I will start just briefly, and this is why the PowerPoint is dated February twenty-sixth. This was the date of our presentation to the state. And essentially, in the yellow here is what the state has defined as our downtown. And these are essentially where some of these benefits come from. And the mayor referred to tax credits and other incentives to really prime our economic engines for the community benefit. So this is, of course, our part of our downtown looking toward the west here. And as we can see in terms of development, as I pointed out to the state, we are surrounded by water. But also, what's important to note is that we're surrounded by railroad tracks as well. So when we come to look at the city in terms of developing for the water, we have to take all of that into consideration. And of course, this is the other part of our downtown designation over by the waterfront. And the Gardner Park, although it doesn't sit within the designation, certainly adds to the beauty and the benefits of our downtown designation. So I want to take us just generally, we see in our community by the numbers. I won't go through all of these, but we do have certain challenges in terms of our economic situation, in terms of our income and our unemployment rate. And a number of these things impact the types of development that we can look at in our immediate present. But they're certainly not insurmountable for development that we can bring in over time. And when I say development, I don't just mean outside development, but I also mean internal development. Entrepreneurs in our communities, students in our high school who have business ideas to support this kind of development in our community. Our trade market area, the people that we do business with. Businesses are fond of saying here, "We do business with basically half the pie." Because as we know, we sit right on the Canadian border. And within a forty-five-minute trade market area, which is about the distance you're going to have people drive to come in and shop, half of it is, almost half of it is on the Canadian side. So that's both an opportunity and it's also a challenge for us. But it's certainly something that we look at. So the downtown program, the years 2012 to 2017. When the designation status was granted to Newport in 2012, it was a banner year for Newport. As we all recall, the EB5 developments had just been announced, a great fanfare. And you'll recall what these were. There was to be an arena hotel and convention center over here by where the waterfront plaza was. There was to be the downtown development block, which would have been restaurants, hotels, and various facilities, retail stores that would have gone in what is now the development site on our Main Street. And then the economic engine to drive this development was going to be the biotech facility. So that's where we started in 2012, forward-looking. We began to see that this spawned business development in our downtown. We started to see maple fields on Main Street came in 2014. We had our wonderful Ducet Thai cuisine that was opened on our Main Street. UPS on Main Street opened up and beautiful apartments above. We had Inspired Yoga that opened on Main Street. Beans by the Border, a great coffee shop in our tasting center, opened. Del Chetti with the gelato on Main Street. So we started to see business development coming into our Main Street. We saw, of course, the Chowder Shack that Steve Rowe runs here at the Gateway, also developed in this time period. We also began to see some refurbishment in our historic district. Some of the most beautiful buildings were repurposed. This building is now the Green Mountain Farm to School. We saw these lovely turn-of-the-century buildings rehabbed. We also saw, again, the Proudly Inn with Steve Rowe be repurposed into a beautiful bed and breakfast and inn for the city of Newport for private events. Design of the downtown, our flower pots, the flower pot program and other beautification efforts continued. And in the first half of the downtown's history, these marketing platforms had been developed based on Newport's assets. Our Fresh by Nature, which is our relationship to our farms and our restaurants. The Active by Nature, which refers to our recreational assets on the lake and in the mountains. Newport Genuine by Nature, which reflects, of course, all of us in the city of Newport. And then Bienvenue Downtown Newport, which reflects our outreach to the Canadians, our neighbors to the north. Of course, promoting downtown events was something that happened over the last five years. Most recently, the Wednesdays on the Waterfront. And these are just terrific slides to show, over the course of the summer, what this one event did for our downtown. Just look at that spectacular picture there with, you know, there were nearly a thousand people at the last event for Newport. Again, more promotions. We did a lot of work to promote the winter and summer events through the Active by Nature campaign. We did a lot of the cycling events, the skiing events, the water events, the hockey events that are on our lake. We talked again about the running, the cycling, the Northwood Stewardship Center, the Shred Fest that the kids put out in the park with the skateboards. All of these are marvelous activities that we can use to promote, enjoy ourselves, and promote to other communities. We developed a marketing platform to welcome people to Newport for our Canadian neighbors. And I'll scroll through this quickly. But essentially, we defined a trade market area to our north so that we'd say, "Well, what does it look like thirty, sixty, a hundred and twenty minutes from our border? What does this look like for our businesses?" And we can effectively develop profiles of what people are spending thirty minutes from here, sixty minutes from here, a hundred and twenty minutes from here, and where they're spending their money, and how we can get them to spend it here in Newport. How we can design to get visitors to Newport to do this. We link these to specific markets. Who are the people who are likely to come here and enjoy what we have to offer? These are various markets that we would look to target. And again, we would use data to say, the data will help align their messages with some of these target audiences. Tourists, event participants, retail shoppers, second homeowners, business investors, residents, conference organizers, there's a range of people that we can market to. We'll use this data as well, and we continue to do so to promote our assets. And we know our assets include our downtown retail and restaurants, the cross-border festivals and events, which is very important. Newport is certainly a recreational destination. And Newport also is a business destination. We are a foreign trade zone, which does offer benefits to businesses coming in. And there are a number of businesses in Canada that are interested in Newport specifically. So this is all very good information to us. So we know, of course, in 2016, this was a watershed year for Newport for a number of reasons. We started off in January with the Canadian dollar at the lowest point it had been in ten years, so it's sixty-nine point nine cents. And as we know, that impacts the business coming from Canada into Newport. So that really hurt some of our local businesses. We also had just a lack of snowfall, which is really tough on our area businesses. And we knew that Walmart was going to open up, which concerned a lot of our small businesses. And then, of course, we know in April, oh, I'm sorry, in April, we had the announcement of the EB5 announcements. So we couldn't control the Canadian dollar, we couldn't control the snowfall. But what we could say was, "Let's look to see how Walmart will impact our community and our businesses." And many of you will remember the event. We had a hundred and thirty business leaders from the surrounding Orleans County area come to a Focus on Walmart session. We invited Littleton, New Hampshire, and St. Albans to give us perspective on Walmart in their communities. Littleton gave us the twenty-year perspective because they have twenty years' old experience with Walmart in their communities. And St. Albans gave us the more recent experience, about seven or eight years, with the impact of Walmart in their communities. And this was a terrific discussion, and there were many great strategies for businesses that came out of this. And so this was one of our great successes. We then, of course, got to April, and we know the announcement by the state of the failure of the EB5 projects for Newport. And as we talk about, the biggest impact for us here in downtown Newport is this development site. And so this is where we ended up, effectively at the end of 2016, at the end of essentially our designation period in 2017. So what was the response of Newport, aside from disappointment? What was the response of Newport to the collapse of these proposed projects? Well, the city and the downtown organization joined forces and said, "First of all, we have to find a way to continue to invest in the city. We have to retain our existing businesses. We have to look for new economic strategies, and we have to build our capacity to lead development." So these were essentially the four strategies that were discussed. For the investment in Newport, I realize this is hard to read, but through the city, the work of the city and the downtown organization, there were over one point eight million dollars in grants since 2015, since Laura Dolan became there are over $1.8 million in grants since 2015, since Laura Dolan became city manager. $1.8 million in grants that have come in to support the city and its services that alleviate that burden from the taxpayers. So this is a tremendous addition to our downtown development. So that was part of our investment in Newport. To retain existing business in downtown, we were very happy to hear that Vista signed a 10-year lease to stay in the downtown. They bring thousands of customers a week to the downtown. They are an anchor store, and I highly encourage everyone to shop there, go to their salad bar. It's a great location. But you could not replace what Vista does for our community by simply putting in another store. It simply would not draw in the same numbers. So it's an incredibly important keystone to the success of our downtown. The economic strategy we developed was, look to the lake. We have this tremendous natural asset. We know through our history that the lake has always been important as part of our community. It functioned very differently in the early part of our history. It was a logging, the logging industry, the pulp mills lined the state. Our downtown in our city has developed with its back to the lake, because effectively, with railroad tracks and pulp mills along the lake, you wouldn't want to be facing that to either listen to it or smell the pulp mill. So we developed with our back to the lake. And one of our strategies going forward is, now that the lake is a new, is effectively a new asset for us in a different way, we want to reorient how we engage the lake in our community. So Ernie Palmerow stepped forward initially with, working with the city, specifically Laura reached out to look to see how we could, as a community, look at Vista and the land that was behind Vista on the lakefront to develop a walking path. And Ernie was all for it. And so he worked hard with the city, with the downtown organization and the state to develop a walking path that will be open later this spring, officially open. And that will also have two docks, one for motorized watercraft and one for non-motorized watercraft. This will help the businesses on that side of town. The Great Outdoors will be able to demonstrate products, their kayaks, their canoes. Folks who live along the lake can hop on their boats and come over and shop at Vista or on the Waterfront Plaza. So it's a great, great asset, and it opens up the lake to all of us in the community. It will be public access. One of the interesting things about Newport, and we all know this living here, is that although we're surrounded by the lake, there is very, very little public access to the lake. A lot of it is privately owned businesses and houses. So the more we can open up the lake to the public, the better we are all as a community. So this is the first step in doing that. And of course, you've seen this rendering of what that walking path will look like in a few short, warm weeks of spring. And we did receive several grants to help with this, as well as great donations by the Palmerow family, and incredible effort by our Public Works Department, who have been working steadfastly to work on this path, to put it together. So an incredible private-public partnership to affect us for the city at no cost to the budget of the city. Again, I went out and took these pictures for a grant application in March. This is effectively what it looks like back there, or did back in March of last year. And this was the groundbreaking with Ernie and Tony there, with both board members of the downtown organization and city officials, to have the groundbreaking ceremony last year. Again, look to the lake. We're working on the Bluffside Farm Development, the recreational path, which will be a seven-mile waterfront corridor from the Canadian border through the Bluffside, connecting to the walking paths in downtown Newport. What this effectively does is it opens up an entire new market for Newport. The trails on the Canadian side are high-use trails. And so connecting them effectively in this more logical way through a waterfront corridor will draw people into our downtown. So this is really a tremendous economic strategy. It's a new strategy for Newport. Again, it opens up the waterfront to our public in ways that are very, very beneficial to our community. So this is a very exciting economic engine that's really taking root. And there's a lot of funding opportunities that are happening. It's about a $1.8 million project that is being accomplished through grant funds and other funding strategies, again, not through municipal funds and taxes to the community. So with the other strategy of building capacity to lead development, you've been hearing about these various studies that have been done. The Widenberg Market Study, which helps define our area in terms of our market. The market assessment that was done. The Pinnacle Advisory Group's done a hotel feasibility study for a waterfront hotel. And our most recent study, the VHB Group, that's working with the waterfront and Main Street overall plan, and how to better connect our downtown community to the waterfront so that we have better access, our visitors have better access, and we enjoy the lake for what it is. So these are all pieces to help us build a platform to move forward into development. The city and the downtown organization will be hiring a shared physician, an economic development person for the city, an executive director for the downtown efforts initially, to better coordinate these efforts for our development. So, you know, of all of the communities affected by EV5, I think you could argue that Newport certainly was hit probably the hardest, because we weren't left with as many assets to develop. And we have to remember, there were nine buildings in here that were taken out. And so I like to remind people that in the last 25 years of Newport's history, we've only had two developments on Main Street. One was the Maple Fields in 2014, and the other was the State Building back in the early '90s. So that's 25 years, two developments, and we're effectively replacing nine buildings. But we have to keep in mind as well, the retail strategy has changed a lot nationwide. Bricks and mortar stores are finding it difficult to compete. We have to start, we have to start thinking creatively. Downtowns are not as much retail any longer, they're more experiential. So as we start to look at what we can do here, we have to think about new ways of doing things in our downtown, and what we might be able to do. One of the benefits, these were some of the groups that have assisted the downtown organization over the last five years, and we certainly wanted to give a shout-out to all of them and others as well that have assisted. And of course, looking forward to Newport's next 100 years, which is where we are right now. At midnight, we step into our new 100 years moving forward. So one of the beautiful things about living in a community like ours is the longevity of relationships that we have with people. And the future for our next 100 years really began for us by listening to someone who lived all of the 100 years of Newport's history. And Tony Palmerow came back in March of last year, and he spoke to the businesses about the early years of doing business in Newport. And he reassured businesses that despite the disappointment of the EV5 developments, that Newport had a bright future. This is what he believed. And he has certainly seen ups and downs over the course of the 100 years of his life. So the organization decided to dedicate, he passed away just before we submitted our application for redesignation. And we said, well, it's appropriate to dedicate this to Tony, who started his business career as a young boy in downtown Newport, right where all of us are. And he did so much for so many throughout his life. So this was our presentation to the state. They sat back and said, we thought you would come in here with a dark cloud over your head about what's happened, but they can see it's been very proactive, that we as a community feel, all right, we're disappointed, but it's within our control. And we've had the Vermont Council on Rural Development visits. We've had a number of community visioning sessions. We have a lot to work with. So going forward, we're looking forward to community involvement. I know there are committees forming for various things. We have the downtown organization, formerly known as Newport City Renaissance Corporation. And the board has decided to change that name to simply Newport City Downtown Development Organization so that we step away from the association of the name with the Renaissance Project, the EV5 Project. That was a mistake in association. The two had nothing to do with each other, except for the name. And so the Downtown Development Organization will be looking for volunteers, ideas. It's meant as an organization to provide support for development. And we now have the designation for the next five years to step into Newport's future. So this is where we are. I think we can be proud as a community of what we've done so far. And certainly, I look forward to working with all of you and anyone who cares to work toward Newport's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, for those positive words and nice forward-looking glimpse into Vermont's and Newport's future. And now, I just want to remind you, okay, that this is just a glimpse of what's going to happen next summer. There is so much planned, and there are so many events going to happen, that we just invite all of you to take part, to become a part of our organization, and to help out. It's going to take the whole community, folks, to pull this off. And I hope that all of you will support this effort. I'd like to thank those who have worked so hard to have this happen tonight. And you are all invited to be, to come upstairs and see the displays that are up there. And you'll see some of the memorabilia that supports what Jim has said, too, pictures and so forth about our history. And, okay, Jim has something more to say.
I know you're looking forward to be saying more. I just wanted to say that Newport, the new fire station was built in 1998, but I had it in my notes, and I skipped over it. They're also celebrating 100 years. They were chartered in 1918. They took the place of the Methen Magog Host Company, Frost Willinger Host Company, the Village of West Derby Host Company, and a little-known host company called the Batesville Host Company. If anybody's wondering where Batesville was, it went from Curtis Corner West. And I want to bring your attention to the flag up here. That is a linen flag. It's hand-painted, exactly the same on both sides. It was hand-stitched on there. Laura found that in the closet. And the map over here, as Carol said, we have one restored. The library is in much better condition than that. But if you take a look at that, Newport on that map was called Lake Bridge. And there's a Town of Salem on there that doesn't even exist anymore. So that's all I can say. Everybody can go upstairs, because we're about to have Firework and Cake.
Yes. Okay. That's all I was going to say. Firework and Cake.